It is now seven o'clock and it's time for us to start our meeting. So could everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy to see everyone out today. And we are going to start our meeting with inspirational moment by Dennis Oriano.
Thank you, Miss Gloria. This is the great moment for everybody because I go and start with my English and everybody's speech too. This moment. Good evening, everybody. As we feel very happy to have all of you in this meeting. I hope we continue to see a lot of people light tonight. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to God. Also, I'd like to say thank you, Dr. Hanson, and all the members. For the last, I believe, two to three weeks ago, we have, I had the opportunity to fly to San Diego, California, to convention, one convention. And I believe me, that was great for me. I learned a lot. I learned a lot, the parents, a lot about the kids, about how the board worked for our community. Also, I'd like to say, we have a good, good community, a big community. We have a very good parents, very good students. We have to work together. We don't have to see where we're coming from, no matter which religion, no matter nothing. We have to work together to have a greater student. In the end, the parents, we go feel very happy because all kids do the best. Help the school board come into the meetings. In that convention, I speak with a lot of other members for the other state. They surprise whatever I say. They say, wow, you do good, but we have to do better than that. Good is not enough. We have to work more, more. I hear over there all these speeches, what they say about their members, their kids, their parents. They show us how hard they work. If they work hard, we have to do too. We have to do better to everyone's. Nobody has to go over us. We have to be in the top. Please, work together, you know. When I come back, I spoke with Mrs. Claudia and Mr. Taylor this morning. We go and start to work with the black community, with the Spanish community, with the white community. We have to do, we have to work. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Taylor because they support us to start work. And in the next maybe couple months, we go and start with two events for our community. I don't say for the Spanish, I say for our community. Please, give you support to us to work hard for your kids, for all kids. They need, they need us a lot. And I said that, thank you very much for this moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. We are a community and like he said, it's good when we work together. Somebody said, working together works. Somebody else says teamwork is dream work. And so there are so many slogans out there about working together. And that's what makes Warren such a great school system is because we focus on trying to work together. So thank you so much, Dennis, for those inspiring words. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to the superintendent for his superintendent report.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, community. Mr. Oriano, thank you for your words of inspiration. As you know, we had our two-week spring break over since our last board meeting, but we still managed to do quite a bit in that time. Our journey to preschool, kindergarten, and high school open houses were on March 22nd. I want to give a big shout out to our high school. They did an outstanding job with creating a great experience for our incoming freshmen. Our preschool and kindergarten families were also had the opportunity to tour their schools and meet their staff. Our Warren Online Academy Open House was this past Monday, held at Renaissance. And due to Mother Nature, we had to reschedule our intermediate middle school open house. And it is next Wednesday, April 27th, from six to eight. If families missed these events or are not able to attend, they can visit our district website and select the online enrollment tab on our homepage to start that process. Board members, I want to share with you some important meetings that we had over the last couple of weeks. Myself, district level, and school level leaders met to conduct a comprehensive overview of our academic and student support policies, practices, and programs. The purpose of these meetings was to identify all the initiatives that we have in place for Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, identify our needs and gaps, and align our people and resources accordingly. Our next step with this work will be to identify areas of priority, develop action plans which include measurable metrics to hold ourselves accountable. Most of you may be aware that our students in grades three through eight are I-Learn testing this week. The first few days have gone pretty well. We've had some technology glitches and it's not our glitches, Mr. Schroeder. It's not you guys. We've had some outside glitches that have been out of our control. I do want to encourage our students to do their very best. Even though these results will not be applied toward our school accountability grade this year, they do give us a glimpse of our student growth. So good luck to all of our students taking that. Couple of spotlights I want to highlight. The Warren Arts and Education Gala last week. I know many of the board members were able to attend that. What a great event for our community. We had over 300 people in attendance. The foundation raised over $90,000. So it was a great event. The next Warren Arts and Education Foundation will be the annual golf outing, which is on June 14th at Maple Creek. So if you're interested in that, please put that on your calendar. Last Saturday, we had over 200 students, parents, and staff, and community members organized to do the Warren Pride cleanup for the Far East side. I can't sugarcoat this one. It was pretty bad out there. Our community needed that cleanup and we may have to do that twice a year. But kudos to our Warren Central PTSA, the Indianapolis Seaside Rotary Club, our incredible Warren staff who worked that event and got everything organized and chart walls for their participation this year. Congratulations to our Digital Goats Robotics team for winning the state competition this past weekend. We had some good fortune and through their excellent preparation and teamwork, they took first place in the competition. They are currently in Houston, Texas, competing in the national competition. Board member Julie French is one of our volunteer coaches and that's why she is not here this evening. She is down coaching the team. And board member Rachel Burke is a proud parent of one of the team members and she is also a volunteer judge for the competition. So we wish them good luck. And my last announcement for this evening is please, if you've not already done so, go visit the Warren Elementary Art Show, which is held at our Porter Service Center from 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. all this week. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. At this time, we will have board comments and we will start at this end with LaShana.
Thank you, President Williams. My notes are going to be a little shorter because Dr. Hanson stole my thunder for my WAVE report, so. But I am a member of the WAVE board, so I attend that on a monthly basis, working closely with Mr. Taylor and his team and some of the awesome Warren staff in our attendance workshops. So those are held bi-weekly. Mr. Taylor likes lots of meetings. So continue to participate over at MCRC. I had the pleasure of going over to Lakeside for the Snow Cone fundraiser, which had a lot of kiddos running around with PJs on and just buying tickets. And I got snatched a couple different ways and got on the tying shoe committee. So that was really fun. So I'm excited, will be excited to kind of visit some more of our elementary schools. The conference in San Diego. Thanks for our district for sending me. It was very edifying, very informative, and have a lot of things that to bring back, you know, to our board to kind of strengthen our township. But very proud that we are trailblazers in a lot of things. It's not too many districts that have resource centers. And so, you know, I was able to raise my hand that we had one and how the family liaisons are taking off in other, some other cities that are doing really, states that are doing really well. So I was able to raise my hand on that one as well. Thank you for our awesome trauma training that we've had here. I was actually invited, do you want to come up and teach about the traumas? Like Warren has that. So just really proud of us here of what we've been doing. So continue to keep up the good work, superintendent and your cabinet and all of the staff. Again, the gala was wonderful. Ms. Brittany done an awesome, awesome, awesome job with the gala. So excited about the golf outing that's coming up. And we far exceeded the goal of that. So that is my report.
Thank you, LaShana. Terry?
Good evening and welcome. It's wonderful to have so many people in our room this evening and to be able to honor some incredible people. In the past month, I've had the privilege of attending the National School Board Association meeting. The conference allowed our board to collaborate and learn from other boards, to share what our board does, and to really see what's going on across the nation. During our time in San Diego, I'm going to highlight everybody here. I'm proud to say that we completed a community service project for the Monarch School in San Diego. The Monarch School Project nurtures resilience in unhoused youth and families. We packed over 80 backpacks. We were the largest group that came through. Well, we weren't in people-wise, but we filled the most bags of anybody else in the conference. And along with filling over 80 backpacks, we each wrote a personalized note of encouragement from our district. It was a great way to give back to the community that supported us during the conference. I also was in attendance at the WAVE Gala. It was incredible event. The music performed by the Warren Jazz Band was exceptional. You would have thought that they were paid professionals. I do believe that everything that the WAVE board and all their associates did was amazing. And I thank them for a wonderful evening. And I also have to highlight that they gave away $5,000 scholarships to two of our elementary schools, Lakeside and Sunny Heights. I want to wish good luck to our robotics team, to Rachel and Julie, and all of our kids. Really wanted to highlight a couple of things from our highlight speakers. Two, we had three different speakers. One was Damon John from the Shark Tank. He was very informative, talked about how he made himself who he is. If you did not know, that FUB clothing was designed and marketed by him in his creation when the hip-hop movement came. It started as B-U-F-U. So he changed all the wording, started going to hip-hop things, and just made his own brand and made who he was, him who he was. Also, we had, I'm a wonderful speaker, Liz Murray. She is from, her life story has been shared from homeless to Harvard. Just an incredible story of a young girl who had a lot of challenges in her life and how just a couple of people just telling her and encouraging and telling her that she's going to be somebody, she's valuable. And all of those just sticking in her head and her believing those. She pushed herself to complete high school in two years and then earn a free ride to Harvard. So I know that it's, we talk about a village, it takes a village. And you never know the impact of the words you're saying and how they're going to leave an impression on a child. So, or a kid or anybody. So just always be kind, encourage everyone, and believe in them. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. Now we'll have, oh, both of you looking at each other. Howard, you could go first.
Way to go, Terry. That was cool. I don't think you mentioned it, but did you tell them that the young lady who went to Harvard was homeless?
Yes. Yes.
Was fighting through that. It was a very inspirational story that she told.
Now you can hear me. Inspirational story that she had. So I'm glad you mentioned, I'm glad you summarized each one of those guest speakers or those general session speakers because they were all very great. They were great. And I wouldn't have missed it for the world.
I did forget about the youth performers.
Okay. Anyway. The other thing too, I want to bring up. Dr. Hanson, you got to make sure we've got carts out there for the golf outing, okay? I'm going to need a cart. Yeah, thank you. The Indiana School Board Association has announced the recipients of the IBS, a exemplary governance, governance award program for 2021. I think it was last week. Last week, they made that announcement. And the program is designed to honor school boards and school boards and school board members who had demonstrated an outstanding commitment to continuous improvement and professional learning. For this program year, only 179 school board members are EJA Award winners. This includes 82 commendables, 48 advanced, 24 distinguished, and 25 exemplary school board members. I'm happy to announce that President Gloria Williams was awarded the Individual EGA Commendable Award for our school board. You didn't know that? There's more to come here in June, in May. I'm also, there were 88 school boards that also received the EGA recipient award. You get the individual awards for individual board members and the outstanding things that they've done. Then you also have a school board recognized for those things that they've done. And they only identified 88 school boards. And I'm happy to announce that we were one of the school boards that received the Commendable Award. Thought I'd share that with you. They're going to make that presentation. In the state, there are about, they have regional meetings all over the state, sometime between, between April the 18th to May the 4th. Our region is Region Eight and it will be holding its meeting dinner on the, on the second. And so we're going to all try to be there and see Gloria get her, get her award. And that's, that's, that's pretty much all I've got right now for board comments.
Wow, you know, that almost brought tears to my eyes because, you know, I've been through a lot, you know, with the death of my husband and trying to, you know, readjust with that. And, you know, to end up this year with an award that I didn't even know anything about. You know, in the midst of sorrow, there's always joy. So I just thank you so much, Howard. Thank you for, whoever was involved with you, I sure appreciate it. And Dennis told me that he had already said his comments at the beginning, so he's going to pass. And now I'm all filled up, so I had a few things I wanted to say. Okay, let me put my little glasses on. I just wanted to say I am grateful for things that are happening here in Warren. I want to give a shout out to Superintendent Hanson and administration team that work with our apartment complex. We lost a young, a little young man that got hit by a car. And they worked very, very hard to develop a safe bus stop for them within that apartment complex. And I want to say thank you for that. Let's give Superintendent Hanson and his team a hand for that. Because we don't want to lose any more of our young people. I want to also thank our Chief Pettis and all the officers. We have a lot of activities that goes on here in Warren. And they are always there providing safety to our students, our parents, and our community. So let's give them a hand, you know. And I would like to say to Marcus Clayton and Matt Parkinson, forgive me if I mispronounce your name, for working so hard with our construction team in order to renovate our buildings. And we're so grateful for that. Let's give them a hand. We also have James Taylor and Claudia that works with our Hispanic families over at Morehead Resource Center. And they're doing great things with our community and the families over there. And I just want to commend them and give them a hand also. I also attended the Education Foundation Gala. And I want to thank Lynn Matchett and staff and everybody that work with her. They raised over, well, they raised $90,000. And that was the largest amount that we've ever raised. And that was just to be commended. People were just donating money and this money is going to be used here at Warren. In addition to that, they awarded two elementary schools $5,000. And so we had two schools that received $5,000 that they could use within their schools. That is really to be commended. Let's give them a hand. Also, if you did not know, we have a program called Women of Power. And it's sponsored by one of our officers, Officer Harris. And she meets with these girls once or twice a month. They even went on a field trip to a historically black college in Central State during our break time. And the girls were amazed at the college campus just to give them an insight of what college is all about. And then this past Saturday, they talked about mental health. And I just thank the PTO for providing the mats for the girls to lay on while they played a soothing tape for them to just lay there for 20 minutes just to relax their minds. And so these are some great things that are going on. And there's about 20, 21 girls in this program. And I just want to commend Officer Harris for doing a great job with that. Also, I wanted to thank our teachers for doing such a great job. They just jumped right in and they're back in the swing of things of educating our students after all the interruptions with the COVID-19. I tell you, that's a lot. You know, teachers had to make so many adjustments. And I think that they need to be commended for that too. All right, I'm almost done. I am proud of all of our parents, like all of our students. Like she said, they're winning, you know, awards, robotics. And there are other students that are doing great things here in Warren that we don't even have time to just go over everything. And I think that we should be proud of our students and just if they're watching, let's give them a hand. All of our students. I only have two more. Thanks to all of our parents for hanging in there. I know our parents have gone through so many changes because of COVID. But we thank our parents for their support and just hanging in there through it all. Let's give our parents a big hand. And finally, I'm down to the last. I want to thank our board for working so hard. You know, we work really hard trying to make sure that our school system gets exactly what they need and everything runs smoothly. And we have a great team of board members here. And we all work together in unity. You know, they say teamwork is dream work and that is true. Let's give the board a big hand. Thanks to our board. And with that, I'm ready to move on. I'm ready to move on.
Wow, that's true.
Okay, now, we do not have our Warren Central student representative here. You know, they're getting ready for the prom and everything that's coming up. So unfortunately, she's not here. But we do have our mayor's neighborhood advocate, Allison Mundell.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have just a couple of quick announcements from the mayor's office. The first is that Project Indy Initiative is still ongoing. So that is to get young people 16 to 24 employed this summer. And there's more information at projectindy.net. But they have over 200 employers looking to hire young people and give them employment skills this summer. And then just second along with that, Indy Parks is also hiring youth 16 plus to staff all of the parks this summer. And they still also have openings for younger kids to attend the day camp at Indy Parks at both Windsor Village Park and Ellenberger Park here in Warren. That's all the announcements I have from the mayor's office.
Oh, thank you very much. Now we will have our spotlight, starting with James Taylor and Marcus Clayton, Legretta Smith and Rich Shepler.
President Williams, congratulations on your award. Very deserving of your honor as well as our board. Congratulations on your, your recognition. President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. This evening, I have the opportunity to introduce a very close friend of mine, a very close colleague, someone that I met within the first couple of months, starting at Warren Central High School 20 years ago. He's been around a lot longer than that. But for those of you that know James Taylor, you know him as the longtime social worker at Warren Central High School, the lifelong child advocate, Dean Taylor, I think he self-proclaimed called himself when he served as a dean. And now as the director of the MCRC. And if you come to a board meeting, you pretty much hear his great work that, that James and his team, that they, they execute day in and day out for our community. But tonight I want to introduce you to Coach Taylor. Now, many of you don't know who Coach Taylor is. Coach Taylor is, has been recognized by the Metropolitan Inter-Scholastic Conference, the MIC, as one of their 25-year honorees. In other words, he was selected as one of the top girls, head girls, track coaches in the history of the, the first 25 years, I should say, of the MIC conference. And again, for those of you that don't know Coach Taylor, I know Coach Taylor. But when Coach Taylor became involved with Warren Central Girls Track, because when you think of Warren Central Girls Track, you think of excellence, you think of the five state championships. I believe the six or seven state runner-ups, the number of individual champions. Just the past six, seven years, we finished in the top three, just historical accomplishments. But when James first became involved with our girls' track program, it was just the opposite. The MIC conference started in 1996. The first season of girls' track was in the spring of 1997. And many of you don't know this, but the first three years of the conference, Warren Central Girls Track finished in last place. You remember that, James? We finished last place the first three years. The fourth year, we finished in sixth place. And then things all changed in 2001. We brought a young lady in, Warren Central alum and former state champion, Hope Robinson, at least that was her name at the time. I know she just recently got married. But Hope came in, teamed up with James Taylor, and they went on a phenomenal run and really took Indiana Girls Track by storm and changed the landscape. At that time, Carmel was the dominant team in the conference. And Fort Wayne Northrop was the dominant team in the state. They had won several state championships in a row. But again, starting in 2001, and this is why James was recognized as an assistant coach, they went on a phenomenal run as it relates to the MIC conference. After finishing last place the first three years, starting in 2001, we won the conference championship in '01, '02, '03, '04, '06, '07, 2010, 2011. The last three MIC states, or MIC championships, 2007, 10 and 11, James was the head coach. In addition to that, we became the best girls' track program in the county, winning counties, six county state championships in 2001, 2, 3, 4, 6 and 7. When you have that type of success conference-wise and county-wise in central Indiana, that means that you're going to compete for state championships. And starting in 2006, after finishing state runner-up in 2002 and 2003, Warren Central Girls Track finally broke through in 2006. I remember that, I was there. And we won three consecutive state championships. In 2007 and 2008, James Taylor was the head coach of our girls' track team that won back-to-back state championships. The first in our track school history, girls' track school history, to win three consecutive state championships. I mentioned the three straight, the three state runner-ups in '02, '03 and '09. James Taylor also coached during his tenure 11 individual state championships, four relay state championships. Marion County Athlete of the Year is Zanay Savage in 2003. And then he was also the state coach of the year, I want to say, after his second state championship. When James Taylor finally decided to move on after dedicating a good portion of his career to track, as a young athletic director, he came in and I said, James, what, where do we go from here? What's next? And he said, Marcus, there's only two people you need to talk to. And they're over at Lawrence North right now. That's Legretta Smith and Steve Smith. And I remember Steve because we went to the, the same college and, you know, having the trust in James. And I know how important Warren Central Girls Track is to him even to this day. We brought Legretta and Steve in. And I think, well, you'll hear, hear, you'll hear, hear shortly exactly what she's done. I think we all know what Legretta and Steve has done with the track program. But this all started, the, the legacy, the tradition of Warren Central Girls Track started with the hard work that my friend James Taylor did. So I'd like to introduce to you an honoree by the MIC conference as one of their top head coaches in the first 25 years, Coach James Taylor.
Keep my name out your mouth. I just wanted to say that in front of a group of people. I, I don't have much to say. I'm, it's honored to be honored by my own people. We entrusted Legretta with the jewel. And there's no other person than her and Steve that I wanted to take over girls' track. In 1996, we did win our first sectional ever in school history. And Matt Proseki was the head coach at the time. And he started crying. And I said, man, why are you crying? He was crying because we won the sectional, but they took it back from us because we did some bad paperwork. So, so we went on to do great things after that. And we never looked back. So when people talk about the best program in Warren Township, it ain't football. It's girls' track. I'm, I'm just letting everybody know that we support female sports and we got it going on. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Rich. I want to thank you all so much. My heart bleeds black and gold. And we have some bigger things to accomplish in Warren Township. And I look forward to the challenge. Thank you.
Marcus, Marcus, one second. There's a plaque for Mr. Coach Taylor. And if Janine could get a picture of the two of you, please?
Yeah, you want to keep this on there like plastic on the couch?
Get, get a picture first, get a picture first. Show the plaque and you gotta smile, Coach Taylor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to say his name. Isaien Jacob.
Thank you. President Williams, Dr. Hanson, and members of the board. I know Ms. Coach Taylor just mentioned the great work as a new athletic director. I went to the meeting for the first time and they start talking about the MIC 25 years. To hear all the athletic directors and assistant athletic directors talk about our track program was a pride that I was so proud to be a part of this wonderful township. The best part of it was, they said, they mentioned the names and they just kept going, Warren Central, Warren Central, Warren Central. But the key thing that they mentioned that was, and I know everyone here is gonna be proud about is the fact of the excellent job that our coaches have done with our students in our township. That gave me more joy. So at this point, I'm gonna continue with what Mr. Clayton said. We have a great coach and you've heard about her, Coach Legretta Smith. And I'm gonna brag, there's a lot of awards here. So give me some time because I want to give her all the credit that she deserves. We would like to honor and congratulate Coach Legretta Smith on being named to the MIC 25-year anniversary list. Coach Smith has taken the Warren Central Girls Track Program to new heights and since our arrival 10 years ago. First award in 2016 and 17, she was IATCC, Coach Legretta will tell you what that means, Coach of the Year. United USTFCCA, Coach of the Year, 2017. ICGSA, Coach of the Year, 2017. MCCGSA, Coach of the Year, 2016, 2017. Four MIC championships, 2015, 16, 17 and 18. Four county championships, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017. Nine sectional championships. Eight regional championships. ISHA, state runner-up, 2015, 2019, 2021. State championships, 2016, 2017. So when you think about Coach Legretta, you look at 2015 moving forward, it's all about Warren. So last year, I asked Coach Legretta, how are we going to the state championship? She said, ah, maybe if we finish fifth, that would be good. So I'm standing with Marcus Clayton. And he goes, I think we're gonna win this thing. I think we're gonna win this thing. We lost by one point. By one point to a team of young ladies that she took to the state championship. Again, that goes to tell you the amazing work of what Coach Legretta does with our coaching staff. She is amazing. And I was standing with the Noblesville Athletic Director and Coach. And I won't repeat what he said. But he goes, oh my goodness, if she's doing this with these young girls, I guess none of us is gonna touch the state trophy for the next four to five years. Six school record holders, 31 scholarship athletes, 23 Division One. Please join me to congratulate Coach Legretta Smith once again.
Can you hear me? President Williams, Dr. Hanson and members of the board. Thank you for this recognition. And it's, it's a lot of pressure following Coach Taylor. And as, as you heard the story, we, we had a lot of rivalries going on between Coach Taylor and I. And then when he said he was retiring, he, he gave me a call and said, I want you to come over. And I, I was nervous. I was happy where I was. And I said I wouldn't leave unless I got a head coaching position. And I was offered the head coaching position here. And it's, it's been amazing. And what makes it even better now is I want to say thank you to Marcus for bringing me on and Mr. Jacob for keeping me. But now I have the opportunity to coach my daughter on the team. And so that's been amazing. She was a little nervous because she transferred from another MIC school. But thank you to Mr. Shepler for providing the, the team for the, for the support in the building that she gets throughout the year. And so, and then two more years, I have three in the building. So I'm excited about that. But thank you. And I'm glad to see some of my former athletes are here that, and one of my athletes that's also in the MIC on the top 25 list, coaches with me now. So thank you guys for your support. Thank you.
Once again, President Williams, Dr. Hanson and members of the board, it is the track day today. I would like to introduce to you guys to another fine jewel, Brian Stevens. Congratulations to Brian Stevens for being named the New Balance Indoors National Champion in high jump while ranked second in the United States. So a little bit about Brian. He came to my office and goes, Mr. Jacob, I'm going to this meet, but I think I have to talk to you. And I have to talk to you to get a waiver. And I said, not just the waiver, we have to make sure Mr. Shepler approves it, that he can actually leave so we can make sure. And I said, I'm not gonna sign it unless you are going to win. He goes, what else do you expect? So Brian holds the indoor school record for high jump at several feet and a half inches. He was also the indoor MIC champion in the pole vault and high jump as well. Congratulations to Brian Stevens for cementing his place in the Warren Central Record Book. And good luck to him on his quest for state championship in outdoor this season. Please join me to bring in Brian Stevens. Once again, before I even move further, is in the family. His sister is here. She also won state, a first state championship. Please sign up and be recognized as well too. So it is in the family.
Um, I just want to say thank you, just to the community around me, the coaches, athletic director, just everybody down to the, like, the students, all the way up to the principal. It's just been a great experience. All four years, I've always had a supportive community. Whether that was when I was down to 6'3" or when I went up to just being a national champion, being a top jumper in the nation, it's a great feeling. But I've always been humble and just passed it back to my community. So just having everybody there for, there for me means a lot. I want to thank my parents, my sister, all my siblings, everybody. I just, it's just a blessing. I don't even know how to put it in words. It's crazy. I just want to say thank you.
As I said before, we have so many things to be proud of that's happening here in Warren. Let's give all of these people another round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Dr. Steve Rogers that has presentations on radio program, automated skills, and electronic skills.
All right, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, thank you so much for this opportunity this evening. I have with me here, members of the WEDM radio program, and they're going to tell you a little bit about their state championship. So Mr. Adam Cashner, our instructor.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. President Williams, Dr. Hanson, board, thank you guys so much for having us here. This is pretty special for me, I'm a 2007 graduate of Warren Central High School, I went to school with Mr. Parkinson, we were teammates at Model UN, so this is kind of a full circle moment. The, the purpose of a radio station, the, the primary purpose is to serve the community. And if you had checked about a year ago, with most students or most residents of the east side, they may not have known that we had a school radio station. And as of now, you can't say that. It's pretty special, today is April 20th, it is National High School Radio Day, literally. So this is, this is very cool. Every spring, they have the IASB Awards, that's the Indiana Association of School Broadcasters. And we have submitted, along with dozens of other schools, over 800 submissions statewide. As a school, as 91.1 WEDM, we finished top four in the state for our social media, so that's Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, digital space. Alex Dixon, The Hurricane, please step forward. Finished top four in the state as an on-air personality, playing all the, the great hits and talking in between the songs and delivering great information. And Isaiah Hoffman, Coach Hoff, host of the Hoff the Cuff Podcast, finished first place in the entire state for sports play-by-play and for radio in-depth interview. For these students, please. As we heard from Mr., from Coach Taylor, we are not just football, we are also girls' track, we are also the digital goats, the robotics team, we are Latin club, we are chess club, we are choir, we are orchestra, we are academia, we are lots of things. And we get to use our platform to embrace the township and to lift everybody up to serve our community. We are informative as much as we are performative. And before I wrap things up, I want to also give a special shout out to Mr. Jeff Matthews, our instructional assistant. This cannot be done without him in the classroom, done amazing work with our students, please. One quick note, Mr. Hoffman here, very special, has received a full ride scholarship to Indiana University East in Richmond to do sports play-by-play. He will be the sports voice of the Red Wolves. And his right-hand man, Nakori Highlight Hoag, will be joining him in Richmond to form the full sports team. Alex Dixon will also be attending college, pursuing podcasting and communications. And we'll be back here a year from now, as DJ Vell and DJ Mack, Jackson McKenzie and Quavel Cook, sophomores here that have shown very brightly in their limited role so far, but will continue to do great things. They will be our sports voice next year, and we are very proud of 91.1 WEDM. Thank you guys very much.
I want to tell you guys, I do listen to that, and I appreciate it. I'm always following the podcast, and I'm the Twitter girl and all that stuff, just always wanting to know what's going on. So thank you for all you guys do.
Oh, I started off by saying all the nice things that was going on, and I'm just getting more and more excited as the evening is going by, just hearing about all these fantastic things. Thank you. So we're turning back over to you, Mr. Rogers.
All right, thank you very much. We did have two more state winners in Skills USA. Skills USA is a statewide competition at the, there's actually multiple levels depending on the competition. So some of the competitions have like a sub-regional, a regional, and then a state, and some just have regional and state. And we were able to have two winners, one in electronics, Gerardo Hernandez in electronics, and then Ethan Tucker for auto collision finishing. Unfortunately, neither one was able to make it tonight, they're both working, but congratulations to both of them for state championships. They will, they will both be heading to Atlanta, the third week of June, for national competition, so.
Thank you very much. Now, LaShana, do we have any yellow cards?
Not at this time, President Williams.
Okay, thank you. Well, now we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval amendments, financial report, payroll claim, financial report, claim register, and electronic payments, financial report, year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resources report, also use of school property and change orders. Could I have a motion?
I will make a motion.
It was motion by Terry, could I have a second?
LaShana Triplet, second.
It has been moved in second. We will vote electronically. Is it, is it working?
Mr. Howard and Mr. Dennis, did it come up on your screen yet? Okay.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, great. Now we're ready to move on to reports. Dr. Hanson, COVID safety.
It's that time for me to share with you our COVID data. I will share with you, since the COVID numbers are really, really low right now, which is a great thing, Marion County has changed kind of the way they are advertising the number of cases. So instead of doing a percent positive, they are doing a seven-day average. Right now, the seven-day average for last week was 32 cases. So we're continuing to see a, a real low impact in our community, as well as in our schools. Right before spring break, we had four cases. This last week, we had two cases, so knock on wood, let's keep things as is, and I'll give you an update next month.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. I hope it continues to go down. Now we will have progression, professional growth by Kate Swartz.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, and members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and report out on our professional growth plan. I have a few updates that we'll get to, and I brought co-presenters this evening. Professional growth really allows us to highlight our board goal of providing high-quality and effective teachers and administrators. So many reasons here, I highlighted several for you. Providing teachers with opportunity to network and collaborate is a huge reason for professional growth. Research-based ideas and instructional practices, reminders, refreshers, and new opportunities are all embedded in that. Ensuring that principals have the opportunity to provide opportunities for students and staff, along with in learning on their own, and increasing their own professional growth. Professional growth communities within our district are a big part of this. Supporting leadership, developing leaders, teacher leaders, is something we really focus on. And then continuing to transform our school system to provide what we, the support we need to our teachers and staff. Our professional growth plan addresses how we invest in our people, how we invest in the future of our graduates, and how we invest in efficiencies. When we focus on our professional growth plan, we are investing in people because we value their voice, we value their time, we value their expectations that, that they have for themselves as professionals. We are investing in the future of our graduates by improving our practices and supporting our students. And then we're investing in efficiencies, because as you can see in a few moments, we are really trying to connect all of the things that impact our teachers. So, I brought a prop. We are also, we are also undergoing a remodel with our professional growth plan. As you can see, we, this is my blueprint, we've provided a catalog for teachers before to choose from. We have a quarterly calendar that we put out that has reminders of things that we need to take care of, and also things that they can choose from. We have school-based professional learning calendars that give us the topics and the learning for the month. And this year, we are undergoing a remodel. So I'll explain. Phase one, we looked at structural analysis and put together a design team. Our structural analysis was, really indicated that we needed to make a shift with professional growth and extended day. We also put together a design team, which, we have K4 representative, Chris Presley, and 5'8" representative, Mr. Covet. I also have a high school representative, I'll explain that when we get to her slide. And then in phase two, we, so we brought together the design team, which they're going to speak about. And then phase two, we'll talk about how we're constructing our prototype and putting our design team feedback into play. And then phase three, construction begins. So I brought my heart out. Phase one, so I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Covet and Ms. Presley, so that they can speak to the opportunity that we had when we joined together, this is a copy of the agenda. We came together for about an hour and a half, I think, to kind of analyze and discuss our professional learning opportunity, and they're just going to speak to that.
Dr. Hanson's here. Hi, I'm Chris Presley, 4th grade at Lowell Elementary, so I definitely understand construction. We're in year two, I think, or year two and a half, or 20, but it looks great, everyone should come and see the school. When we got together, well, first of all, I'm going to say, I've been here a really long time, I'm an old dog, and I still love new tricks, I love the new tricks. And one of the things I really appreciated was being a part of, what's this new design, you know, going to look like? And so, one of the, we talked about professional learning, we talked about professional development, what's the difference? And then we talked about, what is a good professional development, what do teachers believe is good? And the thing that really struck me the most was that all these teachers from all the schools, and I don't know about you, they came up with the same answers. Like, we really are the same. And we want, you know, it to be relevant, and we want to be moved, that's what we said. I said, you know, oh, teachers are inspiring people, and we get excited, and what we want is something that's going to move us, that's going to move our souls, so that we can get in and help kids on that journey of the graduate. So we all kind of agreed in snacks, we want snacks.
I can attest to that as well. I am Charlton Covet, STEM teacher at Stony Brook Intermediate Middle School. When we got together, there were several of us that came through. Stony Brook was actually highly represented in that group, and it was pretty awesome to see a bunch of us there. But also to collaborate, and I think that's the key word, collaboration. We all got together, put our ideas out there, and like she said, no matter what happens, no matter how we, how much experience we have, whether we come from north, south, east, or west, we all come down to one thing, and that is, we're all here to grow. We're all on this pathway here to make sure that we can see the growth here in Warren Township. So, and I'm happy to be on board with that as well. The way this was all set up for us, it was really cool to just kind of dive deep into it. When you first get a challenge or whatnot, you put your brains together, you come down to a solution, and this is what I teach all the time with my kids, especially in STEM, like, we have a design process, so what's the first thing you're going to do? You need to identify the problem. The problem here that we're facing is, what can we do to make our learning even better? Okay, so we have all these people here with our expertise, we're going to come down to the solution here, what is working, what is not working, what can we improve on? And that's basically what we came up with here. And snacks was definitely one of the biggest things there, we need to have. As many snacks as possible.
A 345 is a snack, or 330, that's a big deal.
Absolutely. But overall, the biggest thing I took away from this is that we do have a bunch of resources here with us. Teacher voice is powerful, and as long as we keep on using that here, and keep moving this train going forward, I'm sure we're going to find our way to our solutions very quickly, so.
Snacks time and learning, that's what I took away, I'm just kidding, lots more. Lots more, they gave me lots to think about to move into phase two, and so I collected everything that they developed, everything that they worked on, and put it together into a professional growth plan prototype. And now we're in the phase of feedback. So we are currently presenting the plan to administrators, and then soon to be presenting the plan back to the group that helped to design it, so we can have some feedback, so that by the end of this school year, we can have a professional growth plan for next year. So we're in phase two right now. Want to give you a little snippet, or preview of what is to come. One of the other things that we're working on, and when it comes to professional growth, is that we understand there are demands on teachers' time. We also understand that the expertise cannot lie with one person, it's actually with our village, our community of learners. And we have a lot of expertise in this district. So we're launching, this is our soft launch, we're launching our own, I'm calling it our Netflix streaming network for teachers. It will be housed in Canvas, so all teachers have access to it. And it's a series of videos made for teachers by teachers, showcasing the wonderful things that are happening in our classroom, the work that they're doing. They're short, so they can do them in 10 minutes or less. And they also provide a ton of topics, so we put together a little, little commercial for you. So Warren Plus coming soon. I skipped ahead, sorry. Oh, one more slide. Okay. And then my third, or the phase three construction begins, is just to talk a little bit more about the Warren Professional Learning Portal, where we will have access to videos, modules, professional presentations that we've accumulated over the years, and also our Warren Plus page, which is teachers helping other teachers. In addition to that, we'll have a connection to all things curriculum and instruction, where they can find what they need, and then an opportunity for teachers to continue to give us feedback as we learn and grow in this process. So excited about the changes that are coming. So excited about the changes that are coming, excited about our remodel and prepared for it, and then we're going to continue this great work with our teachers. I do have one more teacher who couldn't come tonight, and she was going to talk about phase three. I don't know if you know her, this is Betsy Riggsby. And I asked her to give me a statement, and she commented on how teacher input is critical to the success of our professional development program. An open and honest dialogue with teachers about their needs and concerns ensures it will be effective and beneficial. While we may teach the same, in the same school, in the same content area, our PD needs are vastly different. The last two years have taught us that a teacher PD support and needs can change in a day. In my experience, PD that meets your needs can be rejuvenating, exciting, and something that you share with other teachers, which is a beautiful sentiment, and also just, she's in it. She has signed on, as I hope many others have, to be part of an ongoing professional group of teachers that give us feedback on our Professional Growth Plan. So, any questions?
I just want to make a comment. I think this is awesome. It's a great support for teachers, and I'm just sitting here in awe, saying it's just great, fantastic. Thanks for all you do.
I just wanted to say, as a teacher myself, an online portal to find things that you're interested in is going to be very beneficial for all of our teachers.
And the kids in the videos are delightful, so.
Oh, I'm sure. And I'm sure that you're going to leave snacks in the mailboxes, right?
We're working on those snacks.
Thank you so much, Kate Schwartz. And now we have Michelle Eaton, K-12 Online Academy.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I want to give you another Warren Online update. As always, we feel that we are working really hard to offer high-quality student programming, additional pathways for students, and I hope that through this presentation, you see how the work that we are continuing to do is focused on investing in meeting the needs of the whole child, investing in people, efficiencies, and the future of our graduates. So as you may know, next year, we will be expanding our online opportunities specifically by combining our virtual offerings into one K-12 academy. And I believe that in this district, the combination of strategic staffing, of having a physical location, of just the district's commitment to offering high-quality virtual options, gives us the opportunity to continue to build something really, really special on the east side. So first of all, I want to thank you for continuing to believe in this program. Last time I was here, not too long ago, I got to share with you some of the early successes that we've seen, and we are committed to building on those successes, to continue to leverage this unique and special environment to create highly personalized, effective, online experiences for students. In addition to offering this opportunity for our own community, I'm really looking forward to also being able to provide this opportunity for students all over the state to choose Warren Township despite geographic limitations. So what this will look like in the coming years as a K-12, first, I want to talk about what the student experience will look like. Some things will stay the same, some things will be changing. K-8, we will continue to be fully virtual. Our 9-12 hybrid option has been really successful, so we're wanting to also continue that. Students will experience a mix of live class and Zoom, and some more flexibly paced online learning that they'll do independently. One of the things that we are really going to get, focus on, is preparing our students for success. So our staff is already working on ramping up our family and new student orientations. We're creating really clear attendance and engagement policies and practices. But we also believe it's more than just keeping kids accountable for being engaged. We feel really strongly that we also have to teach kids what it means to be good online learners, and so I think a lot of our success can be attributed to that kind of focused intention on helping develop some of those self-executive skills, or executive functioning skills, those self-regulatory skills. Additionally, exciting news for next school year, we will be moving. Renaissance School has been a wonderful home for us this year, but we will be moving next year to Highlander Park. This, I think, contributes to the student experience in a lot of ways. First of all, just expanding to K-12 means we have more staff, more students, have, will have more space for, to hold all the teachers in one place, for things like testing and events. But even more important than that, one of our big focuses for this coming year and future years is to continue to build a sense of community and a sense of belonging for our students. One of the big myths of online learning is that it's this very socially isolating experience, and our staff believes really strongly that that doesn't have to be the case. We just have to be intentional, and we have to do things a little different. And so part of having more space and being able to leverage Highlander Park means that we can ramp up optional in-person events. I know our elementary and middle school staff are really excited to start thinking about pop-up events, or we can have maybe a 3rd grade art afternoon, or a science lab for our 5th graders. Use the space to bring kids in. Some of our students want to be fully virtual, but many of them will love to have the opportunity to come in occasionally. Our staff is also already brainstorming clubs, how we can offer clubs virtually, how we can offer hybrid experiences. We're just really excited about having the new space and then really using it to create the best experience possible for our students. You probably hear me repeat over and over again that the real promise of online learning is the opportunity to create highly flexible, highly personalized learning opportunities for students. And I believe that's possible in an online environment by doing two things. One, letting the technology do what technology does really well, so that, two, it can free up the humans to do what only highly qualified, highly effective teachers can do. And so what that looks like at Warren Online in the coming year, we're going to be leveraging some new course content that's really comprehensive. It's going to create a really rich learning experience for students, no matter what time of day or what pace they're learning. And that's going to free our teachers up to maximize that live class time. So our main focus is creating an individualized experience for students. Our teachers are going to spend a great deal of time in small targeted groups and working one-on-one with students right where they need it. And of course, with merging two programs, that comes with its own staffing updates. This is what we're looking at for staffing next year. A lot of similarities between the two programs. I'm excited to get some help. We'll have an assistant director posted, and we have redistributed some of the teaching positions. And so that, I'll just let you take a look. That's all I have. Thank you. Do you have any questions about Warren Online in the future?
I've got a question. Earlier, you talked about reaching out to the rest of the state, making them know about Warren Township.
Yes. Well, I think that's a big focus for us in the future. The great thing about an online school is that if you're virtual, you don't have to live in Warren Township. And in Indiana, being a choice state, that means students all over the state can attend a Warren Township school, no matter where they live, if we can provide a remote learning opportunity. So I think this is a really great opportunity for us, not only to create this high-quality experience for our own students, to give our communities, our families and our community this option, but we can expand the Warren Township family past Indianapolis.
I'm just trying to visualize how you would be able to reach out to Gary, or reach all the way to have him, or get sent, say something, tune us in.
I think there are a lot of ways to do it. You see everything from online ads to Google search optimization, that kind of thing, and word of mouth is really what is getting around already, which is exciting. Thank you.
I think, first of all, great job. You know, I'm a fan for all the assistance you have assisted me with, but not only that, I think this is a great opportunity for our McKinney Vinton students, because when they are sometime placing Gary, I have scholars that have, are from Gary and have to come here, and they're not able to continue their schooling, and they've been in that school for, you know, years. So that's a great opportunity and allow them to still have some kind of sense of belonging. So, great job. I'm glad that we are expanding that beyond, you know, our district.
I have one other question, just to clarify here, that is, I see you have one ELL teacher.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
That's based on. And that's based on our current projections for our ELL student population. We've done a, it's been an interesting thing to keep track of. We've been a very, a growing program, so I think we've done a really nice job of keeping an eye on those students and making sure that we are staffed well enough to handle it. Based on those numbers right now, we believe that one teacher should be enough, but we're definitely going to keep an eye on enrollment and expand that if we need to.
And I just want to say that it's good that we're providing different experiences for, you know, our students, you know? Because if one thing, they have more choices, I'll just put it that way. Offering a lot of choices.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, at this time, do we have any green cards?
Not at this time, President Williams.
Okay, well, we're ready to move on to our action items, and we're going to start with Ryan Russell.
First up, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. First up tonight for action, we're seeking addition of a new class. This class will be at Walker Career Center. We currently have a Certified Nursing Assistant Program that we've talked about before, but we would like to add another certification option for our students, who would be a Certified Clinical Medical Assistant Program for our students. Give our students another opportunity to earn a pathway and to choose between nursing assistant or medical assistant as a certification before they leave high school. Be happy to answer any questions, but I'm seeking that approval so we can start scheduling students in that for next year.
I'll make the motion.
It has been moved in second. I think that's such an awesome opportunity. Okay, it has been moved in second. We're ready to take a vote. Any discussion?
Yeah, we would have two sections of 25. This would be covered by the. For 0450, students would have the opportunity, I don't know if you recall, but we, our adult education program had talked a lot about, actually, I think we highlighted some students who did the medical assisting program rather than the Certified Nursing Assistant Program. So it's a fairly popular option. It would give students the opportunity between, pick between one or the other. We will put placeholders in the schedule for up to two sections of 25 students. I can't promise you, Mr. Dorsey, that we'll have 50 students in it next year, but we'll be able to accommodate up to 50 students at that time.
Any more discussion? Okay, we're ready to take a vote. Okay, it passes. Before you sit down, I want to ask you something. I just thought of this late question. When they take the CNA and then they take the office assistant, once they take that class, or they certify, where, when they graduate, they can walk into a job?
They have to pass the certification exam. They take that class for two consecutive years, and their certification's contingent upon passing the actual certificate, or the assessment that provides certification for them.
Do you all prepare them for the test?
They all pass.
They all pass?
Yep.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Next, we will have Kate Schwartz.
Good evening. Tonight, I am here to ask or seek approval for the textbook rental and our math adoption of Reveal Math for K-12.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I'll second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote.
Thank you.
And it passes. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Dr. Tim Hanson.
They gave me the really important ones. Board, this evening, we seek your approval for Board Policy 3214, 4214. It's just a change in some wording from Christmas to special holidays. Both policies also communicate that board members and employees don't receive complimentary gifts, but seek your approval.
Can I ask a question? What do you mean complimentary gifts? What do you mean by that?
Complimentary reduced trip expenses for professional member or their member must be approved by the Board of Education. Very rare situation for those.
Okay, can we have a motion? Second?
I second.
It has been moved by Howard and second by LaShawna. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. And it passes. Next, we have, we have about four items on our list for Ryan Russell, and he will come to us with each item.
All right, the first three are board, well, two revisions and one addition. I brought to discussion last month, what am I starting with? Sorry. So policy number, first up, policy number 2262, which is an update to our latch key program, which is our after-school childcare. The addition, again, just adds the fact that we will solicit for proposals, which means providing an RFP for allow people to bid for that practice, and then also updates insurance quotas for those programs as well, to ensure that any corporate or company that we're working with, currently that's the YMCA, has appropriate liability insurance. Happy to answer any questions, but I'd seek approval for that, for 2262 at this time.
I'll make a motion.
LaShawna Triplett, second.
It has been moved by Terry and second by LaShawna. Is there any discussion?
If not, we will vote electronically.
I just wanted to say, I think it's a great program for our families and our kids.
You'll probably hear from me next month about an RFP for our latch key program after this policy gets approved, assuming it gets approved.
And it passes.
Next, new policy 2603, School Performance Internet Dashboard, is a new policy that meets the requirements of Indiana Code 20-31-85.5. Basically just requires school corporations to public specific performance data on their website. This doesn't, we're just trying to get ahead of this one. I seek your approval for 2603 at this time.
Can I get a motion?
LaShawna Triplett, move that we accept.
Moved by LaShawna. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Terry, second. Can we, is there any discussion? If not, we will vote electronically. And it passes.
Next up, policy 5113 is an update on school transfer options. Really doesn't add anything specific about transfer options that's not currently in practice. This policy updates all language that used to refer to No Child Left Behind and updates it to ESSA, which is Every Child Succeeds Act. Be happy to answer any questions, seeking for approval of 511302 at this time.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's been motioned by Terry. Can I have a second?
I second.
LaShawna, second. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, we will vote electronically. And it passes.
All right, next up, we are reopening, we're asking to reopen and approve calendar, revised calendars for the 2223 and 2324 school year. The genesis behind this is, you may have heard of new Indiana legislation that permits school districts to have no more than three planned e-learning days in any given year. The calendars that you guys approved last semester actually had four planned e-learning days throughout the year. So in order for us to comply with Indiana Code, the new calendars presented in front of you tonight reflect three. Still every Tuesday, not every Tuesday, the Tuesdays, the Tuesday after Labor Day, the Tuesday of Election Day, and the Tuesday after Presidents' Day, we removed the e-learning days scheduled for the Tuesday after MLK Day to give us our three, and we're happy to operate within those three. Of other particular note, and I know Ms. Amos, you asked about this before the meeting, we still are permitted to have weather-related e-learning days. So the distinction, and we'll talk more about this at a later time, a planned e-learning day will be asynchronous, meaning that our teachers were utilizing those days for professional development and the whole day for professional development. Weather-related e-learning days will have to have a required synchronous component, meaning that at least 50% of a student's e-learning day on a weather-related one will have to be synchronous in lives. Our teachers will have to be teaching from home on their devices. We're prepared to do that. We do need to update some, some guidelines for our staff, but tonight's just about the calendar updates. So we have the appropriate calendars in place for all our families and planning for the next two school years. Happy to answer any other questions, but seeking approval of these calendars at this time.
Mr. Ryan, will we be working also, I know like some, the teachers have concerns with the amount of time between breaks. With our next approval cycle, will we, do we have any wiggle room to kind of help accommodate some of that?
Yeah, the calendar committee that, I meet with the calendar committee every year to review and get additional feedback like that. It's not uncommon for us to hear, especially directly before spring break, about a desire to have another break before that. I would also tell you that I had more, I had people say that, and then the second week of spring break, I had people tell us how great we were for having our break that late, too. So it's a hard, it's hard to balance between the two. But to answer your question more directly, we review it every year, and if the need comes up to reopen it based on a significant amount of feedback, we would bring that to you at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Howard Dorsey.
All right, can I have a second?
Request adoption of revise, revolution, rep, revision of the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 calendar.
That's a mouthful. I know, it's hard.
Can I have a second?
Get your partner.
Okay, it has been moved by Howard and second by Dennis. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, we will vote electronically.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And it passes. And why are you standing there, Ryan? We're going on to discussion items, and you're the first one on the list.
Yeah, tonight, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, I want to elaborate a little bit regarding Director Eaton's conversation about the establishment of Warren Online Academy being K-12 instead of just specific to 512. There are, there is going to be some board action that we're going to be asking for around that in the future, and I'm going to give you a preview of that information, be able to answer any questions, get that to you now, and if there's additional things I can answer in the next month, I'd be happy to. Really, the virtual program in general obviously aligns with board goals specifically, most directly about high-quality student programming. But I would also say every other goal specifically, because really that program is operating, even though we call it a program right now, it's currently operating as a school, and it's doing everything that other schools would do as well. I think that's highlighted as well when you look at our strategic plan. It meets every focus area, all five focus areas that we have. It certainly addresses those more specifically. Some of the language that Director Eaton mentioned is going to be language that I'm going to currently start being more intentional about and talking when we talk about program versus school. What we're looking to do in the future is establish Warren Online Academy as a school, not a program. And the rationale behind that is really specific to Indiana Code 20-199 subsection 4. Indiana Code requires that any, if, and I listed it here, but specifically, if you have more than 100 students in a virtual program or in your school corporation who attend school virtually, and I underline the word shall, the school corporations shall establish a virtual education school. Director Eaton mentioned the numbers that we're currently seeing in online. For the past couple of years, that requirement has been waived due to COVID. They didn't want a whole bunch of virtual schools established, the word, keyword school being established just as a response to the COVID pandemic. I think not only to your comments you made as a board, but things that we've heard out, especially this year. The virtual education program that we currently have is providing a pathway opportunity for a lot of students. It's not just a response to COVID. Students are taking advantage of virtual education for a lot of reasons, and that's not necessarily because they're, they fear COVID or anything else. It's because some students learn in that mode. That's their desired mode of learning, and we're happy to accommodate that. We're going to have more than 100 students in virtual next year. We know that. Matter of fact, we're projecting about 1,000 when you look at it that way. Our current spring ADM, meaning the number of students that we had in spring ADM for virtual was 1,314. So if we take that logic, meaning that we know we're going to far surpass that number of 100. Therefore, we believe we want to continue to offer K-12 virtual options for our students, so it's going to require us to officially apply to the Indiana Department of Education to be a school. So again, the next question's, why does that matter and what does that mean? Being a school just comes with every component of that. Right now, students who are at Warren Online Academy in ninth grade are technically Warren Central High School students. They just happen to participate in Warren Online Academy. As a school in the future, they would be Warren Online Academy students, not Warren Central High School students. That would be a big difference in terms of what that is. Again, that's required by law. That's not necessarily something that we entered into for any other reason with that. That being said, we can still take advantage of all the great opportunities that I know we like to celebrate. So for example, Warren Online Academy students will have the opportunities to participate in electives at Warren Central High School or Walker Career Center, meaning that I want to be online, but I want to be in the new Certified Medical Assistant Program. We can operate that where students can take their core classes at Warren Online Academy in an elective class at Walker Career Center to still get that certification. I still want to participate in orchestra. We, we can provide that opportunity for students. They will be Warren Online students just taking those classes there or at Warren Central or Walker Career Center. Really no different than what we do, other than it's outside our community. We offer students from Greenfield and New Powell to take classes at our Career Center. We would just operate that way where we would allow Warren Online students to take classes at Warren Central. Extracurriculars and athletics get brought up a lot. Specific to that, if there is not, let's talk about girls' track. Is James still here? James, all right. I want to run girls' track, well, I don't want to run girls' track, but if I'm a student and I want to run girls' track, because Warren Online Academy will not have a girls' track team, they would be able to participate in the same corporation at a school that had a girls' track team, which would be Warren Central. So from that point of view, there would be no reason why a student would lose out on the opportunities that we provide in Warren Township. It's really a way for us to dedicate, well, to be compliant to Indiana Code and to most efficiently dedicate our resources in the appropriate way. I'll remind you, there's one drawback to virtual. You get 85% funding for ADM. So, Mr. Dorsey, I realize you asked a question about staffing. We have to be intentionally, I don't want to say sparse, but very intentional about the staffing we provide online, because not just in theory, but in actuality, it should be cheaper to educate a student online than it is in person. Not always, but ultimately, we have to be intentional about that, and we add as we need. We don't start hot, you know, we, we add as we need rather than, we don't want to get in a situation that we were upside down for that. So I'm going to pause there because I realize I've seen some of you itch for questions already, so I'm going to pause right there and see if I can answer any questions.
All right. I'm thinking of student opportunity. We know that this is the first year we're having prom in several years, and I know our kids are excited. Are online students, will they be able to go to homecoming school dances, prom, fall festivals at a local school and be, or anything like that? I mean, are they going to be, even though they're in their exclusive school, are they going to be inclusive in the other event?
Yeah, I almost use prom as an example because I know it's coming up Saturday. So in this example, those students would be able to go to prom, because we're not necessarily, I'm going to talk out of both sides of my mouth. We want to create exclusive opportunities for students who go to Warren Online Academy. I'm not saying we're going to have a Warren Online Academy prom, but to Director Eaton's point where we may a science lab for fifth graders or a specific art night for third graders or whatever else. We want them to create their own school community as well to be a part of that, but I realize in every other consideration, those activities that you get, and we're primarily talking at the high school level because that's where the abundance of those opportunities have, prom, homecoming, football games, in those things, that, that would be certainly available for those students.
I just wanted, what, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. What about their diplomas? What will they, their diplomas look like in graduation?
I don't have a full answer to that yet, and I'll tell you why. My belief, which I'm going to take it for what it's worth, it'll be a separate school, and that school will be required to say Warren Online Academy graduate, not Warren Central High School.
Do you think that would cause parents to shine away from the Warren Online Academy because they want their scholars to be graduates of Warren Central? Do you think that may?
I think it potentially could be a roadblock. And one, the reason why I don't fully have a question or an answer to that, the DOE still can't articulate their actual process for our, to, for us to transition our virtual program into a virtual school. We know it has to do with a corporation amendment process that will open in May, but there's some other guidelines that come along with that. For lack of better, we're waiting on that information. It's supposed to be here Friday. It was supposed to be here last Friday and the Friday before, I will add, but we're still waiting on that. Some of those key details are part of that. But if we take every other example that we know, so corporations that have two high schools, they get the diploma from where they last attended with them.
I just wanted to say, you know, when it comes to high school students, they hate getting up, going to school. So, a lot of them do. So what if we have a lot of students that just want to go online? What's going to happen to just our regular high school? I'm just thinking, you know, out of the box. What if it's very attractive to them? And also, is there, would there be a waiting list or is there a limitation? I mean, I'm just thinking about that.
Yeah, so some of the other Indiana Code requirements for online schools is there has to be a policy on, an attendance policy of when we withdraw students who are habitually truant. So what that would mean in our corporation, meaning we would have Warren Online Academy, and let's just stick with the high school theme, we have to adopt a policy that would suggest, once a student misses, insert, I'm just going to make up a number, 20 days, that we have to withdraw them, and then we would enroll them in Warren Central rather than that. The other part of that is, it's not designed to go in and out of. It's designed to go in at the beginning of the semester and out at the end of the semester, or potentially out at the end of the semester. We have not followed that currently because the vast majority of ours have been responsive to health and COVID situations. The establishment of a school means that we would have to set off enrollment cutoffs for online. And, and again, I'm not here to suggest exactly what those dates would be. We would work on that, but that would probably be up after a few weeks into the start of the school year. We would no longer take additional students and then until the start of the next semester because students can't jump in and out of those like they would be previously.
This wouldn't be, so we're looking at probably like 2023, correct? Because we're using, this may all by July, transitioning from the program to a school.
We are required, so for, for July, for 20, the 2223 school year, if we are going to have a virtual option that will have more than 100 students, we have to, we have to do this really in May.
A question over here say the spring ADM reflects 1,314 students participate in the Warren Virtual Program. Do you have any idea is of these students, or how many students finish all this program?
We're projecting that we'll have 1,000 students in the virtual program next year.
How many do you have now?
About 1,314, give or take.
I, I was just, just, just thinking about ADM as well and how you lose about 15%, 20%. I, I was just visualizing that. If this thing blows up, like I had mentioned earlier about, you know, reaching out to the rest of the state, I guess we could recoup some of that if we really started receiving a lot of kids into the program.
Absolutely. We control, we can control that. Right now, to answer your question that you asked earlier, we are not directly advertising this. Our focus is on establishing a really great online school. We do see a future where we could advertise. We believe we have a unique niche to say, you can take online classes, obviously, no matter where you live. Indiana Code is you have to live in the state of Indiana, but you can live anywhere within Indiana. But even in Marion County, how much do we talk about Walker Career Center and all the opportunities? Work online and take this Career Center class. We believe we have a very unique marketing opportunity to gain students from that. The other thing, 85% is a big deal, don't get me wrong, but when I talk about 1,314 students, that typically is about what one of our 58 buildings have. Our 58 buildings will have anywhere between 60 and 70 teachers and another 20 to 30 support staff. Warren Online Academy is going to operate with under 30 staff with that. So it is cheaper. There's a way for that, not because we're abusing the Warren Online Academy staff, just because a hybrid model allows us and students in the curriculum options that we use to meet a lot of students and their needs that way in a variety of ways. It's just a different type of school. It's just a completely different type of school.
The more I think about this, the worse it's getting in my head. No, no, I don't mean worse. I'm, I'm going to say it worse it's getting, but really it's, it's a positive, and that is, let me ask you this. Is this online program the only thing that we, that that's in Marion County right now? Our online academy?
No, but it's the best one.
Okay. Because I go, I was going to say, you know, they got Area 31 out there in Davis, and I guess there's other schools, districts that have, you know, a similar, you know, Walker Career Center, if you will. And I could see if ours is really, you know, world-class and, and, and blowing up, we're drawing students from those folks, and of course, that affects the ADM and all that.
And we're.
Yeah, I, I see, I see a lot of potential there. I really do, but.
We, we do, too. We're, we're trying to build a really great program and then provide that opportunity to potentially be a way to recruit students as well. be a way to recruit students as well. We're in competition for students, we know that. And we think this provides us an opportunity to enhance that, on top of the other things we do in in-person teaching, as we're in our in-person schools. But we have a very unique opportunity to do this, and that's why we're taking advantage. Plus, just the abundance of opportunity it provides students.
Ryan, I know we're the leaders, and a lot of people like to copy us, other districts and such. Do you, do you project that we'll have other districts, or other districts are going to do the same thing we're doing? Or that we're just getting ahead of it way up front before everybody else?
Can I answer that? Of course. They're going to try and steal it. They're going to check the ideas you're doing, and they're going to try to mimic it.
Yeah. In 2014, in our Race to the Top Grant application, we talked about establishing an online school. It took something like COVID to make us really dive into that. I think now the reality is, we have the right people, the right resources to strike while the iron's hot. And we believe we can provide a great experience for our families, and future benefit for our district. And I think we certainly see this as a way. I can't imagine, it's the year 2022, and the year 2030, let's just say eight years from now, that every public school corporation won't have some version of online education. I'm not afraid to be one of the first. I think we have the right people and the right resource.
Ryan, what about the hybrid model? So if we have scholars that are in another district, is that the responsibility of the parents if they want to attend the Walker Career Center? So have we factored?
We have policy, we have policy right now. We're unable, unless it's McKitty-Vento, we're unable to provide transportation for students who enroll through non-legal settlement through that. The other part of that is, now, we also know that some students would drive a significant, we have students who drive from Greenfield now to go to Walker Career Center in those parts. The bigger issue is going to be, how many students can we accommodate at Walker Career Center than it's with that? I think the other part of the hybrid is, one thing, as Michelle has really uniquely said, that personalized experience, we want kids to come in to make that connection, but we've accommodated, and we make non-hybrid situations work. We just know that we think it works best when we have the ability to lay eyes and support in-person as well. I've really been proud of Warren Online's Academy meeting the unique needs of every student, whether it's been a health reason, an online learning preference, or whatever else. I have no reason to believe, with the resources that we're going to provide, that they're not only going to enhance that as well.
I just want to ask one last question. Moving forward in the future, I, the only problem that I could see is, if so many students sign up for online, that kids are being turned away.
Yeah, it would not be our intention to turn anyone away from online. It would be our intention to make sure we follow the Indiana code and the policy that would say that we can't necessarily take, we can take any new student. We take, we're a public school system, we take new students 180 days out of the school year. Believe it or not, we have kids who try to enroll on the last day of school. We will take any new student. We will not facilitate a process that allows students to transfer internally from online to in-person, to online to in-person, to online to in-person multiple times throughout the year. Because if there's a medical reason, we have medical homebound processes. We have other things that we can do in place. This is an online school that's going to be different than a traditional school. So turn away is not necessarily, I understand what you're saying, but anyone who wants virtual and indicates that they want virtual, we will be able to accommodate. We just won't, we, we just don't want people bouncing back and forth.
So Ryan, for clarification for all of us, you are asking us tonight to take this, read over everything, and for next month, to come back and give you a vote for getting an DOE into school member.
I'll send, thank you. I will send through Dr. Hanson any updated information that we get about the establishment that the board, of the, or online school. There'll be some technical components to that, and we'll have that in advance of the May meeting. It's my intention to come to the May meeting, to ask for the board to officially establish Warren Online Academy as a school, so we can go through that application process with the DOE, so it's ready to go.
Ryan, will you be able to notify, like, the parents? Because you've made a big, it's a big transition, right, from the program to the school, especially if you have, like, online juniors and seniors who were thinking they're under the Warren Online, not getting a Warren Central diploma? Like, will we be able to kind of notify and get some feedback from the families on how they feel, especially like those juniors and seniors?
Yeah, absolutely. As soon as we have clarity on the, clarity on the process. The last thing I want to do right now is to communicate that this is going to be the case, and it's actually not. I don't want to scare people away from online. But yeah, we will make contact with those, so there's a clear option. Every, this is one reason, we'll use this as a plug to go back in the parent square to indicate your preference for next year. Because then, if you update your contact information, you also, we're working through the process, where updated information about schools and stuff will be there as well. So, but absolutely, we will, we will provide that personal touch, especially for those students.
Thank you.
It's the longest one-page presentation I've ever given. Thank you. I'm more than happy to answer any questions throughout the month, so just guys, let me know if something comes up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan. Now we have Allison Woods.
Hey, President Williams, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Uh-oh, probably shouldn't lay that there, because then I'm doing something else. I'm here again this year to talk about updates to our Student Success Handbook. This is to support our board goal of supporting the whole child, and also safety and security for students. And the strategic plan areas of relationships with families in the community, meeting the needs of the whole child, and investing in people. So some historical, where we've been, where we're going. 2012 is really when we started putting work into our Student Success Handbook. It was called Rights and Responsibilities back then. And that is when we started working on implementing CORE and PBIS, and just had, started having some really good conversations about how do we respond to behavior and student behavior? And what does that look like? And what are our values, and what's important? In 2014, we changed and we added levels. We looked at really their behavior, our behavior code format. We took away words, we added words, we tried to really, you know, format that to, to work with what we knew at the time. We added school bus matrix. And in 2018, so it's interesting, if you look back to where we were then, we made huge changes. That looked really different than what it had for many years. Over the last three years, well, it's been more than three years, but in 18, kind of our biggest changes were, you know, recognizing that students who struggle with behavior, consequences don't change behavior. We have to put interventions and supports in place. And so really, we incorporated a lot of, what are we doing to help have students be at school and be successful at school, and support them along the way? In 2019, we changed to the Student Success Handbook. We want this handbook to be more than just discipline, more than just a way for students to be, you know, have our policies in there, to have students be suspended or expelled, that really, we need to have information. We want this to be a resource for our teachers, for our administrators, and most importantly, our students and our families. What you are going to see this year, and I'm going to talk about this year, is last year, we made a lot of changes to the code. So when I was here last year, I talked about, really, we looked at this through an equity lens. I know that James Taylor and Chief Pettis really led the group on, you know, this is not a handbook about arresting kids, and we had a lot of things that were codes and very legalese things. We also had behavior matrices that applied K-12. So a kindergartner and a 12th grader, we had the same codes. And so we changed that last year. We have K-4 codes, 58 codes, 912 codes. And really, the feedback from our administrators has been really positive on that. They're much more age-appropriate, they're fitting the needs. And so when you see our changes for this year, we really did not make many changes to the codes. We added a lot of parent resources and family caregiver resources. We want this book to be more than just about discipline. And so we reordered it, we reformatted it, and added some resources. So the one thing that you'll see, and you guys should have the PDF version attached there, but if you look at the red line version, which I always direct people to, you're going to see a lot of red lines, because I moved whole sections of the book. So I'm going to talk about really the big changes and additions. We have three sections now. So you'll start off with a family and caregiver section for resources, followed by some procedures and guidelines, and then behavior support and response. And our family and caregiver is where we've added the most things. So we have more information about parent square, how do I use parent square, you know, how do I get access to it? We added some more information about academic support. So Canvas, you know, as we moved to online learning for, for different COVID reasons, we had lots of people who were in Canvas suddenly. And I know as a parent, my child uses Canvas, and to figure out how I can, I can get access to that information, how I can be a parent observer to get, to know how their grades are, they submitting assignments. Information about tutoring, 21st century scholars is something we want to make sure that all of our families are signing up for and applying for during, by the end of their eighth grade year. We added information about student and family support. So student counselor. Why would you use a student counselor? What does it look like in elementary school to use a student counselor? As a parent caregiver or student, why might I access my counselor, you know, in fifth grade versus ninth grade? How can they help and support me? Also, family engagement liaisons, that's new this year, and so why you would use them, and when I would call my family engagement liaison as opposed to my counselor. So we included some information on there on what their roles are, and then how they can help families in different ways. Student attendance, Ms. Triplet talked about, Mr. Taylor leading that work with attendance. And so we have in Section 3, the attendance information, the policies and procedures around that. In the Section 1, we really talked about, why should you come to school? Why is it important to be at school? And what, as a parent caregiver, can you do to help make sure that your child's at school? And so we have information in there about that. Digital literacy, how families can support students with digital literacy and developing those skills. And then also the school calendar, which you guys just approved tonight, and that new version is in there as well. In the procedures and guidelines, we added information about our visitor, visitors coming into schools, and what that looks like across our buildings, and then also our safety drill. So Chief Pettis and our school safety team have, I know that he's talked with you about the "I love you guys," and making sure that our families are aware of what those different words are. What does lockdown mean? What does secure mean? They have, their kids may be coming home, talking about that, or getting a message from a principal that we had a lockdown drill today. So we have information in the handbook that parents can refer to about that. Ms. Simba Taylor, our Human Resources Assistant Director, I should have written this down, of Diversity, Equity, and Belonging, I know I didn't get that right, reviewed our handbook this year. And I just said, can you please look at this and say, you know, are there other areas that we can make improvements? And really, she had two, you know, we talked, she was part of our team last year, and then we made a lot of changes in that right direction. But in our codes, so the areas in our codes that you'll see changes to are based on her feedback. We changed the word threatens to poses a risk. So for example, you'll see that, I think, in some of the weapons codes, that it's threatening the safety, we changed that to posing, posing a safety risk, and then changing disrespectful to inappropriate. And then formatting, which I referred to earlier, you're going to see lots of red lines, just because sections have been moved from one place to another, but the content of those sections didn't really change. So at this time, I'm happy to take any questions that you have, or in the, over the next few weeks before our next board meeting, as you're looking through it, if you have questions about sections, or commas missing, misspelled words, send those my way, so I can adjust those as well.
I just wanted to give you a compliment. I do like the tables that you have, when to contact. I was looking ahead, but it's very clear, and I think it's going to be very good for our parents and caregivers. So I like those changes.
Great. We're trying to add some pictures too, so I'm working with Janine, so hopefully by next, it's challenging my formatting skills, but Janine's going to support me, and so it'll look even prettier for our May board meeting, hopefully, fingers crossed. If not, then by next year, it'll be great.
And I appreciate the language changing, as we're trying to steer away from the derogatory language that is labeling, as we say, our at-risk youth, you know, that's putting a label on a youth. So I think that is very equitable, and I, I like the language in it.
I got a question. I think 71, you got an alternative education program or the alternative education school. What's the difference between them? And where are they?
Hold on, I need to pull.
Is it under the consequences of the inappropriate behavior?
So, I'm going to, sorry, I brought the old book with me, so I don't have all the new pages memorized. Is this down here, Kim, that I can download it? Is this one? Okay, everybody close your eyes. Oh. Okay, so tell me which, what?
Yeah, I saw it, uh, H, right there.
Oh, so that's for students with disabilities. So our alternative school would be Renaissance. Alternative educational placement for a student who, with a disability, who has, we have, it's called the big three. So they bring a weapon to school, drugs, or cause serious bodily injury. One of the options, which is that, you know, a principal can propose, is an alternate educational placement for a period of up to 45 school days, but no longer than that. And so that may be homebound, that could be Renaissance, that could be virtual, not through Warren Online Academy, but through our online platform. So the case conference committee comes together, and meets, and has a manifestation conference, talks about what the behavior incident was, and then determines what kind of the best placement would be for the student for that time. It's for students with disabilities are the ones that, yes, meet that.
Is it, and I don't know the correct term for it, James Taylor would know, the, um...
Day reporting?
The program that they have, you know, to, alternative program that they provide students.
Like the ESP, the alternate to expulsion? Yeah, so that would be if then, so the 45 days is, or up to 45 days is kind of a standalone students, that does not mean that they are expelled. And so if a building determines to go through the expulsion process, or the alternative to expulsion process, that's when that ESP would come into play. Now, we do work with, I know that Jessica from MCRC is coming to a case conference. You know, we do work with James and his team, that if we have students that we have identified have, have needs, you know, that we need to connect them with some resources. We, you know, work through them to do that as well.
Are we still doing the restorative justice program too?
Yeah, so all of our deans and APs have been trained to do restorative conferences, and I know that Mr. R, Mr. Rosinoguko, has also helped with supporting some of our schools, with leading some of those, and have, we've had, we've had good feedback. James has also worked with the Peace Learning Center and developed a partnership with them. And so Mr. Russell and Mr. Taylor can also refer students to, to that, and have Peace Learning Center come in and run those conferences as well. So depending upon the situation, we have a lot of avenues we can go with our restorative conferences.
Should we also include that in written document?
It is. It is actually here in the handbook. I don't know the page right now, but it... I don't know the page right now, but it falls, actually in a couple places. It falls kind of in our supports and consequences, so that would be one of the supports. And then we also have a write-up in some of our interventions that we do under MTSS, there's a restorative section.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Also, just to add to that, President Williams, that needs to be kind of a general statement and not specific because each year or, you know, some of those organizations may not do it and they may partner with someone else. And then you would have to keep changing the handbook. So it wouldn't, if you're looking for like specific names in that, that wouldn't be a good investment because then we would have to keep changing the literature.
It's more the philosophy of the different strategies and, you know, supports that we have rather than naming who's doing those.
Right, just put community support.
Yeah, we, really we have a restorative, like a restorative justice section essentially.
Okay.
What? Okay, yes, absolutely. Reach out if you guys have any questions in the meantime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to have closing comments and we're going to start with Howard this time. Yes.
Yes. I just have to say the boys were inseparable.
Thank you so much, Howard. All right, Dennis.
For me, I feel good to hear all the information that you bring to us tonight. And I hope we see you with the great idea, with the more information to us. Have a good night.
Thank you, Dennis.
Very simple.
I'm going to just say goodnight and you guys stay safe. And I would say Mr. Howard and Mr. Dennis had more of a bonding without the ladies. So that story was one-sided, but we did, we enjoyed each other. So great team building time. Good night.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, LaShana. Tara?
Howard, it was really nice for all of us to be able to go. I also wanted to say, when we go to conference, there's a lot of vendors who want us to bring things back. And thinking of all of them wanting us to bring all this stuff back and us to invest in their business, I challenged a lot of vendors to go to donorschoose.org and fund our teachers. So if you haven't ever given that a look online, it's a great place to help our teachers get some of the resources that they need for our students. And I want to just say thank you for everything. I loved highlighting our students and our staff and our coaches. Just have a wonderful evening and be safe.
Well, I'm not going to talk very long. I just want to say thank you for all of you coming and everything that you're doing here in the district. And I enjoyed all the information I heard tonight. I want to say also, I really enjoy going to our conference and we did bond and do a lot of things together. And the service project, the people there were amazed that we stood out, that we did the most putting things together for the community. So that's the, and we worked so hard as a team. They were like, where did you guys come from? You know, so it was awesome. And then I want to thank Howard again for that surprise, you know? I'm just going to go home on cloud nine and my heart is just so happy and I just thank you all so much. Thank you. Everyone go home now, I know you're tired. Meeting is adjourned.